I'd like to call the Lennox Township Board of Trustees. Regular meeting Monday, August 6th at 4:00 PM is ordered. Please rise and join me in the Fudge Allegiance. Fudge Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the flag of the British Union. One nation, united, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thoughts and objections?
I would add, Jeff White's not here yet. He called, he's been here a little late. He would like to add under new business, under I EMS CDBG funds. And he will explain when he gets here.
That'd be I or K. I of K. But I.
I got E is the last thing.
Thoughts and objections? I see Mr. Kincaid show up. I believe we're going to remove letter E. But if you want to check, you can put it on the left side for now. That would be great. I think you have a call for it. To remove letter E. I didn't see it there, so. Just waiting for it, Jenette, to see if they're on. It's lovely, Jenette. Okay, I'd like to remove letter B. Under new business. Any other additions or deletions?
I make a motion that we accept the agenda with the deletion of letter 18E and add 18I EMS CDBG funds.
Support.
Motion by trustee Paisley, supported by treasurer Adenbacher. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Public comments?
I'd just like to thank everybody more to wish everybody good luck on the election tomorrow.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Public comments? The other public comments at this time?
I'd just like to say I had an issue Thursday night at my house. Someone destroyed my front door. And then Friday, the assessor showed up at my house with no markings on their car to do an assessment. And I think we're going to be sending assessors out, but they should have some kind of markings on their car. Because it probably wasn't a real good time for people that I don't know to be showing up at my house. So it'll probably be a good idea for assessors, when they're out, to have some kind of markings on their car.
The other public comments? Okay. Approval minutes? 6:412, 6:1612, 6:2512. Do you have a correction on 6:1612? There was the time for the energy meeting on the last page. It should be AM instead of PM. It's part of 11:55. It was on page four.
Okay. Ryan, what did you just say? We could not hear you at all?
There was a change in the time on page four of the date, 6:1612. It was marked PM. It should be marked AM.
I make a motion that we accept the notes from Saturday, June 16, Monday, June 4th, and Monday, June 25th, with the one added change, I of AM instead of PM.
Support.
Motion by trustee Turchi, supported by treasurer Adenbacher. I'm sorry, trustee Paisley. Supported by treasurer Adenbacher. Any other questions? Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mid-month business? Any questions?
Do we need a motion, Ellen?
We can just file it now. Any other questions? Sheriff's report for the minutes.
The mid-month business was to close the offices on July 5th, which actually did run in accordance with what the county was doing. And it wasn't supposed to close any earlier. So the mid-month business was to go ahead and close on that day.
Sheriff's report. Do not have one at this time. Fire department report.
Receive and file.
Thank you, chief. Jeff White is on the way. Is someone to say?
Yes, he's running along.
We can put him at the end. Nobody minds? Phone enforcement report?
I have his report and the inspection forms from June. I will get with him for next month to make sure that I have the rest of them that I can give to him.
TPW report?
Receive and file unless you have any questions.
No, thank you. Library report?
Secret file.
Supervisor's report? I'd just like to congratulate everybody on the festival that took place in New Haven. I think it was a great fireworks show, a great turnout for people in the community. I think everything went well. Very pleased to see that that went off. It took a lot of hard work by a lot of volunteers. That's all I have at this time. Treasure report?
You have two in front of you, May and Jim. I think we didn't have a July meeting. Do you have any questions?
Questions?
I make a motion that we accept the treasures reports for May and Jim.
Motion by trustee Paisley, supported by trustee Turchi. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Orders and bills?
Again, you have several in front of you. The first batch was those that we paid in June. And they need to be approved here. Then you have the batch, the prepaid's that we did earlier. And I need to make one change. I didn't see that Kathy had under Michigan fire apparatus number 40 on the very last page. He did not receive his check. We were replacing a check. We had done it already on the prepaid's. I didn't notice it until today when I was going over. So that one's already been paid. So your bottom total reserve is going to change to $240,0235.34.
And then you get a copy of, say, Chris Ward. Bring down the bills.
I didn't know if you guys were doing them because I've been giving you both copies and then you turn right around and send them back to me. So we're doing extra. They're coming back approved in the same batch. So if you want them, you need to, you know, I will do it.
Yes. Yeah, you've been doing it every month. And it just, okay.
Right. I'm getting to look at this pad. It's kind of lazy. If you want them for your file, I will.
Yes, I will. Thank you. I make a motion that we accept the orders and bills for August 6th. The prepaid for August 6th.
Beth, can you put that amount in there?
Pardon?
Put the amount in.
For $240,0200. Wait a minute.
Motion by trustee Paisley, supported by trustee Turchi. Any other questions? Deputy clerk?
Turchi?
Aye.
Paisley?
Aye.
Adenbacher?
Aye.
Keith?
Aye.
Trum?
Aye.
Motion carries. Trustees report?
I have nothing to report except that everything, all the paperwork that we received today will be in the folder up at the front reception desk anytime anybody wants to see it.
Remember everyone to pass the word that tomorrow was very important to the township as our officials will be voted in. And I'd like to apologize for my appearance, but I had to leave right from work to get here in four hours. Thank you.
legislature report?
Only thing I have to report is, like Karen said, we have an election tomorrow. We, that's the reason this meeting is at 4 o'clock today, so that we can get the room set up and ready to go for the early start.
Mr. White? Would you like to give, do you have much to report?
I have anything to report. I asked for it to be added to the end of new business.
Yep.
And the font size is the height. Just do it then.
Okay, thank you, sir.
I make a motion to our seats and file all reports. Support.
Motion by trustee Turchi, supported by clerk Keith. Any other discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Unfinished business. Arthritis Foundation co-sponsoring agency request.
You all should still have.
Hold that closer, Jenette.
Everyone should still, can you hear me?
Yes.
Is that better?
Yes.
Everyone should still have a copy of the co-sponsorship agreement. And, okay. Number three on that, insurance and liability has number one under that listing. Each shall maintain comprehensive general liability insurance with limits not less than $1 million. So it's both the Arthritis Foundation and us with $1 million in coverage. Part two talks about the whole harmless. We vote the whole harmless against the township and the Arthritis Foundation. Each participant has to sign a waiver and it specifies on there also in that first paragraph that they are aware of all the risks and, you know, they're doing this under their own discretion between them and their factors. Does anybody have any other questions?
Is Carrie in the responses?
Does Carrie have a copy of this?
I'm candid.
It was just given a moment ago. Who wrote stuff in the red?
That's the person from the foundation. She said this is the standard form that they use for ever.
Does somebody have the actual indemnification agreement? The initial part of under insurance and liability, the indemnification clause in number two says that the Arthritis Foundation shall identify all harmless to this township. This is written in the opposite, in black language in the document I am handing here today. That's why I said I thought we needed a certificate of insurance. I maintain my position. I disagree with whoever said this in red. I believe that the Arthritis Foundation should name Lennox Township as an additional named insured and issue a certificate of insurance. That way, if we are sued because of something that happens over there arising out of the Arthritis Foundation activities, Lennox Township can get defended by another insurance company and not by its own.
So how do you want that ordered or can you?
A certificate of insurance naming Lennox Township as the certificate holder in writing on their insurance policy.
Okay, if I get that from her, which probably shouldn't be a problem.
Well, that would take care of the problem, but that's the opposite of what it says in red. I think we should get one with Lennox Township listed around it in writing to help protect the township in the unfortunate amount of lawsuits.
Does that agreement supersede them in their, the participants' agreement?
No, no, I still think that that's a good idea and that they should have people cite individual releases. But even with that, it's a better position to take for Lennox Township that they name us on their insurance policy and that they, we be listed as a certificate of holder.
Okay. You may have somebody there waiting out here, sure?
Jenette, I have, under the, where Keith had asked, she asked about the insurance. She also asked about providing any needed equipment. Now, on the very last, in the red, it says the Arthritis Foundation does not provide these to each class. The leaders and sites will provide them if possible. That means we have to do that, correct?
Yeah, either us or the trainer. And right now, Linda has pretty much everything she needs.
And I guess that would, you know, because it says the equipment, she filled out, the equipment is optional, which means that at any point, if they did expect the township to provide it, they would have to come in front of the board to approve such a purchase, so.
And the participants that come, if there's not enough bands, the ones that want to use them can use them. Same thing with the weights. They don't have to use them. A lot of women, of course, quite a few of them, can only do so much. So if they can't raise their arm all the way straight up, they raise it halfway. They do what they can do. If they don't want to use the weights, they don't have to. If they don't want to use the bands, like I said, they don't have to. Their personal choice. If you approve this with us, me still getting that document that?
Digital, right?
Right. I'd also decide, you should decide tonight whether you want to charge a small fee that would go for supplies, like they want to buy more bands or more of the exercise books that, you know, she sells.
Charge the participants a small fee?
Yeah. Yeah, and it doesn't have much. It doesn't have to be very much because, you know, they're being paid through the foundation. You know, just a few dollars.
I'd like to see it actually stay free to.
Absolutely.
For the time being. If we saw a big, with people coming in and meaning that maybe there could be more classes in the week or something like that, and, you know, then the instructor was saying, wait a minute, I can't do this for, then maybe we'd have to look at it. But to get it up and running and everything, I'd like it to stay.
That's fine, except the exercise bands only last so long. Just so you know that.
That's something that, like I said, we could look at and say, okay, the exercise bands don't cost that much. We could, you know, through the senior center, CDB funds or something, we could purchase this, this, and this.
Linda is very excited. She's really hoping that you pass this and we can come up with co-sponsorship with the Arthritis Foundation.
I make a motion that we approve the Arthritis Foundation co-sponsorship agreement with the stipulation that they give us a certificate adding us to their liability insurance and keeping it free of charge to those that participate.
Support.
Motion by clerk Keith, supported by treasurer Adenbacher. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jenette. Street light proposal?
We've tabled this item for the last couple of months just due to clarification issues. Back on June 18th, I sent the board an email outlining those clarifications. Did anybody have any questions further than that? Because I did not receive any phone calls thus far. Just to go over it, because the paperwork that they submitted was, you know, they used their own terms, which were agreed to us. Total project cost was $1,620. $752.17 was DTE's portion. $867.83 was Lennox Township's portion. The annual yearly charge, which was for the electricity, service, maintenance on the light, was $250.72 per year, which makes it $20.89 per month. In order to move forward with this, we would need to submit a check along with the paperwork to DTE for $867.83 to move forward.
The only question on this is that was the talk of them rerouting the road? Do we know if that's something that's going to happen or if it's years off?
I mean, yep. I know years and years ago, when certain, about perform certain parcels, there was a discussion, but I think that's all it ever was. You know, it's way, I mean, unless you got a crystal ball, who knows if anything will ever happen to that corner?
Jody, that was something that was brought up and I believe we went to those meetings too, and Chuck, about the road, all the roads. And it's kind of a dream and it's a suggestion.
It was talked about during the road.
There's no money. I think it's a great idea. That corner is so dark. Nasty. I appreciate the resident that brought it forward and requested it. I'll make the motion that we purchase the street light installation cost and contribution, or contribution from Detroit Edison for the light on Russia and Logan Light for a total of $867.83. Support?
Motion by trustee Turchi, supported by trustee Paisley. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Jenette. The business. Fire chief inspector seminar request.
Send everybody an email as well as hard copy of your mailbox since last week, the information on the semi-annual seminar in Lansing for fire inspectors for continuing. That's pretty self-explanatory. Basically, I just need your approval to go ahead and attend and go from there.
Sam, do you know why they charge a 7% county fee? Or what is that? It's like a tax.
That's a local fee, Karen.
Yeah.
And I'm going to tell you, I don't know why. And I'm going to tell you, I don't know why they do that, but, you know, if you're going to Detroit, they do local fees also. So some hotels do, some don't, depends on the city, I guess.
I'll make a motion that we authorize Chief Danny Fuchet to attend the requested seminar at a total cost of six hundred and fifty-three dollars, ninety cents plus meals. What are we doing about the vehicle?
Whatever's available. I'll take either the grass truck or township vehicle.
Okay. And use the grass truck or township vehicle, thank you. Support?
Motion by Trustee Churchy, supported by Clerk Keith. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Closed. Motion carries. Fire department dispatcher hire request.
Back in, I believe at the June meeting, I informed the board that dispatcher Ruth had submitted her two-week notice because she was moving out of the area. And with that, I received approval to go ahead and put, put an ad out, ran a ad for two weeks in the Voice newspaper. We received numerous calls and inquiries, however, most of those inquiries were way out of the boundaries of the township and the fire district. We did receive three people that came in and picked up applications. We received only two of those back. Out of those two, we did full background, I did the background checks, and then we held a formal oral board and type test at the fire department. And I provided you all the information on applicant Brian Dubay. Brian has a history of dispatching for REI on Romeo. He has excellent computer skills, did a great job of the type test, and it was unanimous decision. So this time, I'm requesting the board approve and allow me to hire Brian as our new dispatcher. And I asked Brian to come in tonight if you had any questions at all for him.
My only question is, it says you're available at all hours, so the other positions, because we know this one doesn't have a lot of hours, the other positions would allow you to still be in the area somewhat that you're?
Yes, absolutely.
That was basically where I was going to go with the question, because of the two positions you do hold, whether you're in those areas or if you're here, to be able to respond.
Available twenty-four hours.
Okay. That looks great. I'll make the motion that we authorize Chief Fuchet to hire Mr. Brian Dubay to fill the dispatcher's position.
I'll support it.
Motion by Trustee Churchy, supported by Treasurer Anbacher. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Closed. Motion carries.
Welcome to the team, Brian.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Real quick, I think, because I did pull this, I am off the agenda last week regarding the fire apparatus purchase. We have nailed it down to three companies, and we're going to continue our process. We will be, be able to present at the September 20th, be ready for it, just for everyone. Okay?
Thank you.
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
DPW entry door replacement request.
Down at the DPW, for some of you that are not familiar, the main entry point door that we have is either at the very front of the building, which was installed when we first built it, and then a couple of years later, we put a double door on the south side. The very front entry door, the single door, it's basically succumbed to the elements. It's a metal hollow core door, and between the salt and the weather, it's rusted through, and it's, it's getting bad. As you can see, for the proposal that I submitted to you, I did contact three local contractors, and they seemed to propose to repair that door. Fortunately, it's just a slab that's in, in tough shape, so we're able to save the frame. One contractor would not replace the door without replacing the frame, and I believe that would be the last quote that I gave you, which is also the most expensive. And then the quote that I recommended, he suggested that we redo the caulk around it with a specific caulk to extend the life of it. I would suggest that we award the replacement to CUY Door, which is a current vendor of ours. They've done a lot of work for us over the years. It costs seven hundred and fifty dollars. That would include the caulk. As noted in his bid, the manufacturer of the door that he's providing does guarantee the door not to rust as long as it gets prepped and painted properly.
Yeah, man, the other two proposals, I noticed that they said take down all the way. I can't find that on Citywide. What will they do? Last I will go begin. Do they get rid of the old door for you, or not?
I'm sure he will. If, for some reason he doesn't, all we do is walk across the town and put it in the dumpster. But he's, like I said, he's done, not only work for me, but he's done a lot of work for us at the fire department, he's done work for us up here, and he's always, he's always done things with time and manner, and always gave us a good job for what he's charged us.
I make a motion that to replace the front entry door at the DPW and to remove and recaulk the door frame to prevent door frame failure with Citywide for seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Support.
Motion by Trustee Paisley, supported by Clerk Keith. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Closed. Motion carries.
Car trash can replacement request. Another item that is basically just extended past its lifetime. We have all those small trash cans that we originally purchased when we constructed the park. Not only do we have them in the pavilion, but scattered throughout in different areas for people to use. The main frames are powder coated metal with recycled slats. We had a plastic can liner inside of it with a metal dome top. The plastic liners have become very, very brittle, cracked, broken. I was able to find a local supplier for those, really cheap. The ones that I was initially finding, they wanted like fifty dollars per can, just for the liner, and we was able to find them for fifteen locally, with minor modifications to them, but they should work fine. The dome tops are metal that are powder coated. The ones that we currently have are just rusted out. The springs on the doors are broken. Like I said, they just exceeded their life. But I was able, I was able to find two different vendors that carry them. One, actually, we've never dealt with either one of them, but both of them are pretty much the same cost. One was like ninety-nine, the other one was a hundred and four, and then, of course, you got freight on there. One, I believe, is out of California, and the other one's out of Colorado. Right now, it looks like each lid would cost about a hundred and four dollars plus freight. I would like approval to purchase fourteen tops from one of these vendors where I can get the best cost on freight. Roughly talking to them, we're looking at one fifty to two hundred dollars worth of freight because they have to come by truck because of the size of weight. And then just?
So we're talking a hundred to two hundred dollars a frame, a total of one thousand six sixty-seven for their rounds?
Correct. And a new can similar to what we, they don't make the same cans that we have, but a new can that's similar are three hundred dollars a piece. And those are the small ones. The large ones range from almost five, six hundred dollars a piece.
And we could expect another ten years?
Well, we got ten years out of these, but, you know, I moved them undercover, putting them away in the wintertime, so I would hope that we could get, we're the same manufacturer, same, same top, as far as I know.
Well, you said you've located the plastic can insert for a reasonable cost. What is that?
Basically, they're simple household trash cans, but they're an odd size. And they have to be a certain diameter and a certain height, or they won't fit in the cans. The local ones, I was able to find, fit, but we have to cut the handles off, like the order form to fit properly.
And how much were they only?
I was able to find them for fifteen dollars a piece.
Fifteen?
Yep. Versus the manufacturers that I was talking to, I was getting, like I said, they wanted like fifty dollars a piece for them. And I still had to cut them down for the height, and then, of course, freight on top of that. So once I found these, you know, I was happy that it was close and was able to get them.
Okay, so do you want us, would you like us to approve not only the tops, the frame, but also the inserts at this time? Would that help you?
I've, I've actually purchased half the inserts already because they're at a nominal cost.
Okay.
And I'm actually, they're out of stock, so I'm waiting for another six to come in, which should complete the rest of the cans. Alls I'm asking for is purchase of the dome tops, and then that should bring our cans basically to like new when we first purchased them, because everything else is recycled material. It should last, you know, barring something destroying it, should last forever.
Sounds like a good deal. I would like to make a motion that we approve the purchase of fourteen tops for the cans out in the yard there, at approximate cost of one thousand six hundred and sixty-seven dollars, which includes the tops and the frame.
Support.
Motion by Trustee Paisley, supported by Clerk Keith. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Closed. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Building department inspectors renewal request.
I think the only reason we have this on here is Bob Osterman is trying to do the same thing that we've done for Steve Penovich, when Steve worked for Harrison Township. We helped pay for his registrations, and I thought it should be put on here, even though I know they're going to, they're going to share the expenses with us. I believe the total fees due are one fifty.
This one is a little bit different than our discussion about the senior exercise person. He is actually in, he is an employee. He's paid through, you know, the payroll system, and he's not an outside contractor.
This is the annual? Is this in the annual? They were existed one, one, how long does it last? Does anyone know?
Three years. Three years.
Three years. I don't have a problem with it. I'd like to make a motion that we pay the one hundred and fifty dollar fee for Robert Osterman for his registration video.
Is that one fifty from us, or that's shared? Fifty would be the, probably the next time, or the other township that he works with. I'm not sure about Tottenham or that, but Nancy, I'm going to just put it on the bills and this and that, you know, we've never done this for Bob Osterman, we have for Steve, but let's put it before the board so everybody knows that's what we've done. Support.
Motion by Trustee Paisley, supported by Trustee Churchy. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Closed. Motion carries. Township cellphone replacement request.
I put together this proposal for everybody. Like I've mentioned to some of you, I don't think I've been able to talk to everybody. We were contacted by Nextel, which is now our current provider for quite a few years. As many people know, Nextel was bought out by Sprint many years ago. Well, they're finally shutting the Nextel system down. Everybody will be forced to switch over Sprint roughly by the end of the year. With that, you know, they're starting to push to try and get, make it enticing for people to switch over, so they can do that work. Looking at what we currently have, as you can see, I listed the different lines and phones that we have currently under our plan. Talking with them, we should be able to switch over, basically make it a seamless switch over, only carry six of the seven lines over. That would be the lead, the second DPW phone, since currently we don't have anybody using that one. We would be able to probably save roughly sixty dollars a month, fifty-nine ninety-nine, according to the, to the price quote that I got from our local Sprint store in 2016.
Now, with the switch over, that's going to get rid of the push-to-talk altogether, or it's going to be the new Sprint push-to?
No, that would be keeping that two-way feature. That, the cost for all new phones that we currently have would be ninety-nine cents per phone, that would be for the, because of where we're at with our plan, we're eligible in that course promotional.
Now, that wouldn't include your phone or Denny's, correct?
Or me?
For ninety-nine cents, yours and Denny's, because they're the?
No, that would include ours.
Okay, because I remember last time, that's what it was selling, and then that wasn't what it was because of the type of phone it was, it ended up costing more.
No, all these, all these phones with the current promotion are ninety-nine cents a piece. That's what the proposal I was giving to the states.
Have you done a cross comparison with Verizon and AT&amp;T? And my only reason for asking that is that I know in our area, sometimes the Sprint system, you don't have good coverage, and the Verizon seems to have better coverage.
All I'd like to say, you know, I've, we've hit the Nextel online. I've never had a coverage issue, except a few years ago because of the phone, I had a problem with the phone, that's much of the system. Every time we've voted this out and gone to, whether it be T-Mobile, AT&amp;T, or Verizon, because of the way the plans are, Nextel, which is now Sprint, is always able to beat it. Plus, Next or Sprint is still the only carrier that has unlimited on their plan. They're, they're still the only carrier that offers unlimited on their plans. So we keep it at a fixed cost, which, you know, is still advantageous for us to stick with Sprint.
Verizon's doing something to the same effect now.
If, if they are, I was unaware of that, and I haven't been able to find any information on it.
I, I'm not disagreeing that this is a good plan, but maybe we need to look at?
This is something, just to kind of get it going, instead of wait until, because we're already in August, before we know it, November will be here, and then I want to wait until we're scrambling at the last minute.
I kind of like to table this, if possible, so that you can look into the other companies?
Sure.
And also look at how many of these phones we still need to have here.
Well, as far as the, the number of phones that we still need, that would, I would actually ask for your guys' direction on that.
Right.
As far as which ones you want to carry through. As far as checking other carriers, I have no problem with that. There's a specific carrier or some specific line that you're aware of, please let me know, and I'll follow up on this.
Well, just because AT&amp;T and Verizon are the other two big carriers, I would limit it to that, so that we had apples to apples across the board on those three. And then that would also give us a chance to look at, I mean, I'm only seeing one that's a possible to get rid of, per se, but, but maybe somebody else thinks differently.
Sure.
And I don't know how the rest of everyone feels about that.
Can you make any motions table?
Make a motion that we table this, so that our camp can look at pricing from AT&amp;T and Verizon, and that also have each department that has these phones look over the list and see what the future requirements would be.
I'll support.
Motion by Clerk Keith, supported by Treasurer Anbacher. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Closed. Motion carries. Thank you, Ken. Chloe, one time, moans.
I had sent an email to everyone on July 16th with the wording from the budget approval on whether or not they agreed that the way the motion was read...
on whether or not they agreed that the way the motion was read was that these can go ahead and be cut. And so I did not receive. I received information from Karen Ho, but no one else saw me asking for direction on the bonus in lieu of raises that was approved as a part of the budget.
I'm sorry to get back to you, Jody, but I agree with what you presented.
I guess I, I would like a motion to approve even to the employees. And here's a, that's a copy of the email I sent to everyone on July 16.
Did you make a motion, Jody, did you say?
No, I didn't, because I'm asking for direction.
I just had a question for you, and I forgot, Jody. On the second half, first and third employee, are we still doing that even though there was increase?
The way the...
I forget how we, I know we discussed it, but...
Yeah, that was, it was discussed that that was the insurance portion that neither one of them received. Neither one of those received insurance.
Yes, but they also received the raise in the past.
Right. Okay, that's why I didn't want to just go ahead and...
Yeah, I couldn't remember how we, what we came up with. Because that's why we were doing this, because nobody else had one.
Okay, I believe the medical differential was, I'm going back to the budget discussions, that that would be because those, they did not, they did not take the insurance. And so they're raising insurance premiums.
Does anyone else see what I mean? I thought we...
First and the third?
Here. And this is in lieu, this is in lieu of giving raises, because we didn't give raises to the males.
Would she say that in regards to insurance and the rate that they took, correct?
That was the medical differential that was separate from the whole.
I think that's fine. I was just, like I said, I wasn't sure if we had worded or we had discussed it, so... I'll make a motion that we authorize the employee one-time bonuses that's listed on the email that was sent to us by Jody Keith on Monday, July 16, 2012.
Support.
Motion by Trustee Churchy, supported by Treasurer Hahnbacher. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Closed. Motion carries. EMS CDBG funds. Boy.
Hand out one of these.
Well, Jeff's handing that out, and this really kills. I meant to state this during my portion, but it has to do with CGB funds and SMART. There will be shuttle service for the primary tomorrow, pick-up and drop-up points of the New Haven Village offices, Hux Party Store, and Bramblewood Senior Housing. They'll go there twice. This has been posted, and it's nothing different than we've done in elections past. And Jeff White is going to get that...
They're posting that, sorry, Jeff.
I'm sorry, I don't, I'm not sure where the township posted them. I just took care of scheduling the emails.
Yeah, he, I scheduled them, they didn't send them.
Are they posted at the pick-up points?
Yes.
So, in front of you tonight is, I'm trying to make this as least complicated as I can. Having said that, always when you're dealing with the federal government, it seems like nothing is easy. So when we took out the original CDBG loan agreement to pay for station number three, the maximum length they would let us do what's called a multi-year agreement, which we were going to use CDBG funds for a number of years, was for 10 years. That's going to expire next year in 2013. So basically, we, we had enough funds to pay for the first 10 years of the building and then have to reapply for a period to finish paying off the building. Now, the building's way ahead of schedule in payment. Originally, the building was scheduled to pay off in 2023. And depending on a number of factors, that building should pay off sometime between 2015 and 2016. Now, the letter I put in front of you says that we're going to continue the agreement out until 2017. That's just so we don't have to come back and do this again, frankly. It's, I suspect the building will probably pay off, like I say, in 2015 or 2016. The unknown factor on our building is this. Each Richmond and Lennox Township agreed to allocate $20,000 of their CDBG funds annually for the payment on the building note. However, every year, we've gone to our neighboring communities who have been pretty generous in giving us additional CDBG funds. They, however, because they don't own the EMS, can't be held into an agreement like this. And so we don't know from year to year what they're going to give us. So the short answer is, in the next few years, I'll continue to move to those other communities, and the payoff will likely be sooner. But I wanted to give you all the worst-case scenario. So basically, what this simply does is say that through 2017, Lennox Township and Richmond Township would continue to allocate a portion of their CDBG funds in the amount to pay off the balance of the building through the year 2017. Our other option, frankly, there's only, there's only one other option, is to say we're not going to allocate CDBG funds and then have those funds come from the general funds of the community. Seems to me that using CDBG funds as we have in the past makes the most sense, but that's really your decision and not mine. I just, I just present to you your options. So that's what that, that's what that is and what that does. I did find one very minor typo, so if you approve this, I'll go back and correct that and then bring it down to Mr. Traubly for signature after I've corrected that. The amount that I listed in the allocations, if you will, is two pennies off from the balance. So that was just a, a quick typo. If you look at the amounts there, they come up to actually $249,940, and the balance there shows 249,940.42. So that was just an oops, probably a fat finger on my behalf as I typed. With that...
I'm satisfied, Jeff, if you want to go, if you want the extension on it.
Yeah, so we probably just need a motion that you are going to extend out that, because at some point, the county will probably ask for a copy you administered it. So if a motion that would extend out our multi-year agreement for CDBG funds in accordance with the August 6 letter to 2017.
Show mode. Support.
Motion by Trustee Churchy, supported by Treasurer Hahnbacher. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Closed. Motion carries.
If I could, and this is important, and I didn't want to confuse the two issues, but it may be, it may turn out to be very good news for the communities as a whole. So community development block grants as a whole, Mr. Rosney down in County is looking at making a change in how those are allocated. As opposed to allocating $30,000 or $33,000 a year to your community, what he's proposing is allocating you three years' worth of funds at a time. So next year, Lennox Township could, in fact, get $99,000. That's the good news, which means you might be able to make a very large payment and get this thing paid off very quick. The bad news is, he's going to allocate the county into thirds, which means you might not get that $99,000 until year three, in which case we'll have to work through that with the budget process. You're still going to get the money. But, but that's what the county, that's something we don't have control over. I have made a request with Mr. Rosney's office to make sure that he puts, because we have this multi-year agreement, that he puts Lennox Township or Richmond Township, one of the two in year one, and the other in year two, so that basically we wouldn't miss a beat. He seems to be receptive to that, but I've not gotten a formal approval from him on that yet. I'll stay on top of it with him and certainly keep you informed. Like I say, that's one of those may or may not happen things, and I'll, as, as that process continues forward, I will. The only other thing I'll mention while I have the microphones, I came today from the property that we have proposed to purchase up in the Memphis area for an eventual additional EMS building. Today, they did drill well, finished it up just as I was leaving to come here. We have a good well. There was a good solid flow of water through a five-inch PVC coming out of the ground at about 55 feet deep. So we will go ahead and move forward with the closing on that property private within the next few weeks. That's all I have to report, thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Public comments? Any public comments at this time?
Mickey Budiman at Crossgrove. Just a real quick thing that I just want to bring up to the residents here. Please, people, keep an eye on not only your home, but maybe people that live on your road or next door to you, because there seems to be a group of people that are very active in this area of breaking in. And unfortunately, today, my daughter was one of those people, but she's very much like me and took off after them, and the sheriffs got them.
Oh, yes.
And according to Chris, they've been very active out here. So don't only watch your house, watch the guy next door. We all know whose cars belong there and whose don't. If you have a question, have them come out and check it or call your neighbor or whatever. But this is really getting serious out here.
What did, what color was the car?
Pardon me?
What color was the car?
Silver. Silver.
Yeah, what kind of car? Do you know?
I forgot. I was up there, but I was so ticked off and everything then. You know, and after they went to that house, they went down the street. My daughter got dressed, called me, and took off after them, caught them at another neighbor's house, and then followed them while she had them on the phone. And then they finally caught them up in New Haven. They're well-known in the area. All I saw was when they opened up that trunk, it was full of stuff. So I'm just asking you, be a good neighbor, watch out for our neighbors, irregardless of an election. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Motion to adjourn at 5:04.
Support. Motion by Trustee Paisley, supported by Clerk Keat. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved.